Okay, is this serious or are you kidding?
It's serious.
You're a serious garden. You don't want... You plant, man, we come back and see everything.
I see it, and you, uh, you gonna run that for me?
Oh, no. Didn't have done that. And you can't put tulips in it.
Are those for tulips?
He planted tulips.
Good evening, I'm sorry, just a little technical problem here. So, is everybody here?
I think so.
All right, so we are going to go through the work session for AVO 2021. And we, the first thing is that we do, uh, meeting minutes on Arch 2021. Anyone have a concern?
No.
So, on the, uh, meeting minutes of, for the regular meeting, there was, uh, the section where we discussed about the question as to for the city attorney who goes to resort and give the response. And it wasn't included in the meeting. So, I would like to have this table and approve the, um, the meeting minutes for the regular meeting. And we will, uh, do it on the next meeting.
Is that on the agenda? I mean, on the work time?
So, Mayor Protim, may I clarify for the people in the room?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, uh, there were, the Q and A between Mayor Protim and the city attorney was not included, uh, because we don't do verbatim minutes. But, uh, she's asked to include the Q and A between her and the attorney. So, I said that the best course of action would probably be to ask you all if we can just table it till the next meeting, uh, because we would need time to review the video and make sure we're transcribing it correctly. Uh, which, you know, has no ramifications if you, if you approve your minute panel for, you know, in April 27th, that, that's not, uh, if y'all choose to do that.
So, I, what is that gonna be?
Just the minutes. The first, the, does, so you would not, perhaps the mayor would not call for, the Mayor Protim would not call for a motion to approve the minutes. We'll in fact just push that to the April 27th meeting. And, uh, Mayor Protim, if I may, we have a representative from Johnson Controls here, and he's just joined us. And, um, if you'll see on your work session agenda, he was scheduled to be first, so we'd like for him to have the opportunity to go, so he doesn't have to stay with us for the whole, uh, review of the agenda. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if, uh, for the council, this is, you have two agenda items tonight that talk about some replacement equipment and a service contract. And so, we wanted you to come and explain, because we know we've already put some, we've made some investment onto the units on the roof. And we want you to explain to us, what are we talking about with these two? What is it going to, uh, dress? What is it going to fix? And what does it cover with the service agreement?
Okay. So, you wanna talk about controls piece first, or move to rooftop?
Billy, you take it from here.
Okay. Uh, the first, the first thing we wanna talk about is the, uh, controls, going from Siemens to Medisys. Damien has brought several of his team members along who are actually candidates.
I'm sure, and do yourself, so I didn't do anything.
And so, um, with Medisys systems, uh, so, so a little history. The systems that we have on the rooftop.
I mean, we just need to keep it sustained.
Okay. Uh, our Johnson Controls York units, uh, so we have a Siemens controlling Johnson Controls equipment. So, our logic was, our best bet is to put everything back online the way it originally was. Luckily enough, we have a young man here who actually installed Medisys back when the building was constructed. And he can bring this up to speed with regards to how that would, uh, be more proficient and all of that.
And why Warren won't have to call you on the weekends, because it's actually gonna be working when he has lines? That's what we wanna hear, right, Warren? Yeah, okay. Very good. Take it away.
Good evening, my name is kind of our one control and, uh, very much our agreement that we would, uh, install our supervisor controller, and it would, uh, go right in line with our rooftop units. We'd be able to reconnect with the, uh, terminal units that are throughout the space. Um, we pull that back to the front end, and the team that are there locally will be able to see exactly what's going on throughout the building. Uh, they can create schedules, they can get event schedules, they can get occupancy schedules, uh, alarms, they'd be able to obviously see it from one spot, which I think they're not able to do right now, maybe?
Uh, we can, it's just, yeah, it's the cavers.
Okay, understood. So...
And so, when you say controls, you mean a software?
Yes, ma'am. We would install our supervisor controller and, uh, back in, and then we would pull all that to the front end, so that he should be able to control the building, uh, more efficiently, um, and, uh, hopefully with a few issues. Now, going back, uh, we probably have to do an assessment of what's there right now. Hey, is it still working, making changes, so on and so forth? But from there, they'd be able to run it just like...
Yeah, and one of the...
Hey, Billy, you wanna come up to the microphone, so we can make sure that Councilwoman Knight and Mayor Protim can hear you?
Uh, one of the most critical pieces, uh, with regards to the installation of the Medisys system is to, uh, allow Warren some additional training, so he can completely understand the, the system, uh, from top to bottom. Uh, and then two, we would have a backup person who would be to, uh, back him up. And thirdly, we'll have V as the last line of defense, uh, with regards to the system, uh, especially from the IT perspective, if something where it goes up.
That, that, ma'am. So, why would I need three lines of defense if I'm in a service agreement with Johnson Controls?
Well, it's, it's a part of just communicating. Just, for whatever reason, if someone's on vacation, we've just got a backup plan, so we'll always have...
To call them, or...
No, no, no. Just in general. Uh, but, the great thing about Medisys is, uh, the equipment is York, which is Johnson Controls. And as the technician has, or the person who's responsible for the installation of the software, getting all the app, the, getting all the devices back online is the key to success of the whole system. And, and so, as a part of this whole process, they would go from top to bottom, check everything out, make sure that everything works, safe with Medisys system, which gives us the real line, uh, kinda give this to you.
And, in the, in the event there is a failure, we do, now, the, the agreement you have now is on the equipment itself, not necessarily the Medisys. I'm not sure if the proposal put in included a service agreement or not. That would be something to think about.
Billy, we have both, right? That's what I have. Two different, we have two different...
For Medisys?
Yes.
Okay, all right, cool. And then we do have 24-hour, um, you know, response on call if something, if he's got an event, he's there at 10, 11 o'clock at night, something goes down, and he's in a pickle, he can call me on the mechanical side, and then call on the control side. And then even sometimes, if, if I can navigate the front end, I, there may be something I can solve on site without even involving a controls guy. And then I can determine, well, no, I need a controls guy, and then call the controls, on call guy, and he can come out and assist. So, you're, you're basically, it's a one-stop shop.
Like, if he calls you at 10 o'clock at night, you'll be there tomorrow about 10?
No, ma'am.
Is that what you said, 24 hour? Oh, you're available.
We're on call 24/7. Now, unless I'm on a call, I may have to finish the call alone, and then come to, but, so if you call at 10, you know, if I'm, if I'm not doing anything, how long it takes me to get from A to D would be the response time.
Okay. So, you said that there's a, just to be clear, I think I didn't understand what this was, you said there's a service contract for the mechanical and a separate service contract for the software?
There will be. There's a proposal, if you guys approve it...
I don't think I furnished that because of the, I just, I'm sorry, I'm out of here. I've just furnished the proposal for the actual installation of the controls.
So, what, Billy, what are my, what's the service agreement for?
The service agreement is for the actual installation of Medisys.
Well, it wouldn't be a service agreement, it has to be a install.
The install of Medisys.
So, I would suggest that...
The agreement is, I guess, it's to come. So, we've got the Medisys equipment installed, we'll make sure that it's operational, and then we can set up a secondary agreement that will reflect the, the actual, uh, having a person to monitor that.
Yeah, I gotta come out quarterly or whatever, have it set up, and go through the whole system, and bring anything to your attention, so you can address it, so we can be proactive instead of reacting.
If they did let's remote access, uh, if that's something you guys could allow, and you could also have the ability that if you need a smaller remote in, they could. Yeah, so that makes a lot of times, it's about a drive over there, it's really matter of personal political system.
Even on the mechanical standpoint, sometimes, if we have remote, the controls guy can say, hey, I'm calling for this to run, but I'm not seeing a status, and then you, well, we need to give the mechanical guy out. Whether it be me, or whoever the on-call person has done that, you know, that time frame. Makes sense? Are we doing the control piece of it? Is there more questions?
I have a question. As far as the remote is concerned, who's, who has a hand on that?
Or, as far as the what's concerned?
The remote access, you're saying, if someone isn't, um, here, or...
It would be y'all having a remote access.
Yeah, what that basically means is that... Technician could be at home and type into IP address and pull up the site, and then tell Warren or whoever what's going on.
V, you have?
Yeah, that, that would be my, uh, response really. One, the system is implemented, and I can allow for remote access. Let's say we have a station, the control interface at the Mo Center, and at that point, I mean, if I can allow access for the Johnson Controls to jump onto the computer remotely, to look at the system, to see if there's anything wrong, or the software wise, or mechanical wise, that would be...
Okay, so, uh, if I may, Mayor Protim, do you have other questions? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
Uh, Councilwoman Knight, should, do you have questions?
No questions, yeah.
So, so that I'm clear. What I'm looking at is the replacement of equipment, and that's part of the mechanical and partly software, or only mechanical?
I think you may be looking at the installation of two, new pieces of equipment in a space you're gonna maybe be leasing in the future. Is that right, Bill?
So, are you...
And really, really that controls, the one that's, Protim, in the, that price range, it is a piece of equipment, the engine is a piece of, a device. And then there's pulling in the software. Everything out there is wireless, and it's our system, so we would, we would basically discover, put a discovery, put a look in there. That's how Siemens available to come in to take our stuff. They didn't replace any of the...
But that's for the, the space that we, the carpeted space we already have?
Yes, ma'am.
Not this future...
Not the deal that I'm from.
Okay. Uh, and then, this service agreement, that's for three years, right?
Oh, you're, yeah, you've already approved that.
Yeah.
That's, I actually performed the first preventative maintenance today, as a matter of fact.
So, what we would still need is a, to have this 24-hour available troubleshooting, we don't have a proposal for that.
Correct, yes.
Now, on the mechanical side, you do. If, if you, if he's, if he's on the mechanical side, and he's running, and his, the big RTU one goes down, all you gotta do is pick up a phone and call after-hours service, and they will dispatch the on-call technician to come out and see what's going on. You already have 24-hour service on, on your RTUs.
Is there a response time for you to wait? What's your estimate?
Four hours, but I mean, if, 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 you know, that's if the tech's on something. Now, if the tech's on something, a lot of times they'll call somebody, hey, man, I'm, I'm held up on this call, can you, can you pick up? My phone's normally on 24/7 when I'm on the call, so unless I'm tied up on something, there will be communication, hey, I'm here, I'll be here at such and such time. But it's typically four hours.
Really, within 30 minutes. We basically call the 800 number, which is our number all the time. And after four clock, it rolls to our, um, we have answering system, yeah, a first answer. And within 30 minutes, they'll, the mechanic himself calls, says, hey, I'm here, it's all, and they'll be there.
But the, the one thing that I wanna make clear is, installing the Medisys equipment, uh, will give us the opportunity to assess all of the components that tie back into this operating platform for the system. So, when they do their install, they're gonna check every device to make sure that it's working. If it's not working, then they're gonna give us a readout of costs associated with making a repair. So, technically, you don't have to have an agreement. What you need is Medisys up and running, and be able to see what, what's going on, uh, and get everything back to the, the original snapshot, uh, when it was installed back, what, eight, 10 years ago?
Well, I, I guess the, the frustration for me is, there are all these pieces, and I, I don't understand why I, I just can't get one document that addresses everything. And I got this, and this, and this, and another one. And so, it's not fair to bring this to the council in so many pieces. And so, my expectation is, I need this system to work all the time, and I need to know all the pieces that we need to do that. So, I, I, I get confused. And so, I feel like what if you're saying is that another service agreement, and then that's everything? Or there are still other pieces that we're gonna hear about later?
Well, the service agreement on the controls is, is a suggestion, because, you know, a technician can come out and go through the entire system on a quarterly basis, and maybe find a sensor is not working correctly, or a box is not communicating, or, you know, just, just different things. You don't have to do that, because you can be, that can be pointed out when one of the guys goes to log in on the system and say, hey, I don't, this isn't working, then call a tech out here. The, the three-year agreement you have is on your mechanical, the rooftop units. So, this is just to take the Siemens controller that's in there now out, and put a Johnson and Medisys back in, so you have full...
Well, that is our error, because I thought what we had was a, a service agreement for the software too. And so, because that, I think that's what you're saying, you've got, we put in new rooftop, or restored the rooftop units, you're, you've got a service agreement for those. Now, we're about to put in the equipment to replace Siemens? No. And we need a service agreement for that? Is that correct?
We don't need it.
Well, that's what you're suggesting. But if we want the maximum access and the maximum response from Johnson Controls, we need that service agreement on the software, uh, or on the equipment, not the software.
Not necessarily. Even, once you have Medisys back installed, and you, there's an issue with it, you can still call our 24-hour hotline.
So, why would I, I, I want a service agreement?
Well, there's a reason, you could also, I mean, there's a subscription you can purchase that keeps your, keeps you, fixes bugs, it may be, like any software-based system, it keeps you updated to the latest revision. If the revision comes out, we can install it. None of those things, you, you don't have to have in this function.
So, it's really an internal decision as to whether or not...
You want it or not.
Okay. But how long is the service agreement usually for?
It can be for a year, maybe for three, at any point.
And do we have any idea in your mind that how much, is that a standard cost? Like, we would know right now how much it is?
That system is pretty small, I think, since I say something, I'm gonna be wrong, I mean, recording. Six or $7,000.
All right, so...
That's probably pretty fair.
Is that much? On, on here, the 68, 73?
So, virtually, what I'm hearing is, we are not looking at this 13,000 one, because it's already apparently...
The 13,000 is for the controls upgrade. I'm pretty sure that's what, 13, that's the quote I have on my heart? Guess what I have, Selena?
Yep.
Okay, that is to replace existing Siemens controls system and put JCI back in there. I apologize, though.
A lot of times, we just take both of them. And this one is the, I don't know, I think, I think we're wrong, so, um, but, why don't you come and take these from me, and tell us for sure? So, because the council's not gonna, like, they feel comfortable voting on something they don't understand.
Can you, uh, give it to Phil with this?
Yeah.
I think, I think I feel...
Oh, yeah, he would probably be, be this person to ask the question.
Do you want me to hold these or am I ready?
No, I just want, I want you to look at them, so I'm not, I want you to be clear on what they are.
Okay, so, the 13-884 is for the upgrade, basically the retrofit of the existing system. And, you were correct. And I was forgetting, I guessed with the number, wasn't I? This is a controls agreement. I forgot that the link is asking for it. I was getting emails like crazy, and I did those together. So, this is for quarterly inspections, has a subscription. So, right now, we're at version 11, right?
But that, and so you're saying...
Add these two together would be doing your controls, transfer to JCI.
And that, and that, I think what you're saying, of course, like Councilwoman Quod is, is saying we need to probably wait for the mayor. But, um, so that would be the one you're recommending, but is not, you don't think, it's only required if we decide it's required.
100%. You're still gonna get service from us without agreement. Well, if you need our controls techs, I mean, we're gonna treat you, you already have an agreement with us. You have an council agreement. So, you're gonna get this kinda rate, you're gonna get the treatment, because you already are in business with us, you know? But it would just, some people like to have the overlay of the controls agreement. That way, we come out, you have problems, we can help you, you know, we're there once a quarter, and we can support you guys. It's more of a scheduled visit versus you calling, right?
So, for the, for everyone who's present, I just wanna make sure that Mayor Protim Tran and Councilwoman Knight, have y'all been clear on everything that's been said? Do we need to repeat anything?
I'm good.
Start from the top. The, um, my, my, my very, very, very basic understanding was needing to replace, so to speak, the, the brain and the software, so that Johnson Controls can kinda step in and monitor and maintain the system that's already been replaced on, on the roof. Then there was additional conversation about these other pieces that, they, they sound optional, but they're being suggested, so that kinda threw me way off.
Oh, you'll be answered? I'm sorry, I didn't know who's taking that one. So, basically, all the devices, the roof is the big equipment, supplies the cooling to the foxes that are in all throughout the spaces. You got like the AV, a box, it distributes the air. Our control is on everything. The only thing that's not JCI currently is the Siemens engine. Everything else throughout the facility is JCI property. So, basically, when we put this brain, let's call it, back on, we pull that stuff back in to our frame. And so, basically, now you have kinda a hybrid system, because you got somebody else's front end controlling our stuff. And then it all would be JCI again. So, you'd have a one-stop shop, you know, one person, one company, there's a problem, we made the box, we made the rooftop, we made the controls. I don't know if I helped or not.
Come to me. And on move. I did, so, what, what we're saying with this initial proposal is, replacing that brain, so to speak, is the 13-884 number.
Yes, ma'am.
And we already have, to some degree, some maintenance agreements, or service agreements already in place, based on the fact that if we convert this back to all Johnson Controls, if there's an issue, you all will come out.
Yes, ma'am, of course, definitely.
And so, we don't necessarily, then there was this additional layer of, a service agreement for, was it the software?
It's basically for, it's basically, we come out once a quarter, run it back up, it's like, look for, um, clear, clear your, um, your alarm log, see what you got going on, you know, then go to the device that this runs, for instance, had a problem, we go to that extra device and see what was going on with it. So, it's really just a way to keep your system backed up and running. Um, you know, a lot of people like it, because you know, once a quarter, JCI is gonna be on site, sit down with you and make sure everything's working. But it's optional, 100%. You can just call us on an as-needed basis. We're not pushing it out of our gentry, 100% to your decision.
Okay, I got you.
About, you like, say gave us an order, we'll say, just in theory, we're walking away tonight, we were getting ready to place an order. Probably take a couple of weeks just to get the engine, you know, keep the device, and I would say within a month, we could have it back up and running.
It'll be like, it's, it's probably a week process, once we get the, the device fitted.
A week?
A week. I mean, it's, yeah, the, just the change out itself, there's not, there's not a lot of labor involved. I mean, it's like, be there several days in a row, you know? Work with you, make sure you got the, we're gonna get your new, you'll have, you know, we gotta build the graphics too, so we would need, like, a floor plan, you know, so we could send it off to get the graphics, you know, created again.
So, does that mean there would be days where the Mo Center wouldn't have air?
Although it always had air. Yeah, wouldn't affect that. Right? We'll, we'll just jump it out, I mean, if we had to, we would, it wouldn't affect anything, comfort-wise.
Councilman, do you still wanna wait for Michael? I, I mean, we can't...
Yeah, I, I would certainly like to ask, you know, a guy to hang around for a, just a few more minutes. He, uh, he's an AC guy, so he, uh, you know, he probably...
Maybe better question.
He's sure he's been on the roof?
Yeah, we kinda pulled up.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. While we're waiting for the mayor to arrive, uh, should we, do you want to go ahead and go through the items on the agenda, or you want to wait? You all want to wait for him?
What, why don't we go ahead? Just, just, just wait for him on the, uh, AC stuff.
Expertise. Which is waiting on here for this one, one agenda? I, we can still just put on the meeting agenda, it's just reading off, it's already been typed up, it, you know, we can just run through it.
Okay. So, the second item from the agenda is the Mo Center for the former mayor, Jim Geron. Do everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knight?
Yes, I'm good with that, yes.
And the one?
Yes. Good.
Okay. So, the third item is, uh, a public hearing for the ordinance, the first public hearing for ordinance, 2021-03, multi-family moratorium area. So, we're going to put a pause on issuing the bill of employment for a temporary for under 20 days, while we're looking through our, our code to see if any necessary change should be made.
And, uh, if I may, Mayor Protim, this is that...
Everybody good with that?
This is that renumbering glitch that you called, so it's actually, uh, and, and identified correctly in the public hearing, it's 2021-02. But, you know, it's not, not a consequence to the content of the ordinance, but...
Is everyone good with that?
Referencing the, the...
Go ahead.
Yes? Yeah. We're, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Councilwoman Knight, you good?
I am, thank you.
I am.
So, Dean?
Yes.
I'm good.
The fourth, the fourth, uh, the fourth item is the front camera I was putting in the dog park, South Lake Parkway in the highway 54.
Chief Maston, you wanna come up and just identify why you chose that, um, we know why the dog park, because the council requested that at the last meeting, but talked to the council about why you identified Highway 54 South Lake Parkway.
Well, the reason we did that, we're gonna put it on South Lake Parkway at 54, so that any cars going in towards the mall, we can pick up on, because we have a lot of inner autos and stuff of that nature in that area. And this will pick up on the vehicles going in and out, going in, it won't pick them up coming out, so we got one camera. Therefore, we can identify, hopefully, cause you know, most of them committing crimes during cars, they already committed crimes to you. So it's our, our hot list, stolen or something of that nature, and we can get hit on it in the cars, and we can go saturate the area, try to find it before crimes continue. Any questions?
So what location do you have, uh, the cameras installed?
Well, right now, the only place the city has one is on, uh, the district. And the one's gonna go in at the dog park, and we're trying to put this one in on westbound, South Lake Parkway, right, right in that area where you turn to go to the mall.
That's three.
And that'll be our three, and then, you know, of course, group would have its two so far. Okay? Bye.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Councilor Dean?
Yes.
Councilor Knight?
Yes.
Councilor Juan?
I'm good, thank you.
The next item is Johnson Controls. Uh, the first one is the replacement of silent engine, and the second one is the service agreement for the software. So we're waiting on the layer for input, um, on that one. The next item is the structural engineering assessment for the dark space. City manager, would you give us the council more details about that?
Um, actually, if I may, I'll ask Val to step up and, and talk to us about this. This is the, uh, uh, structural assessment for the dark space, and you have, uh, three proposals in your packet. So Val, we're just gonna talk about the, our recommendation for P and E.
Yeah, so with this one, um, because of the building is, uh, three O, we got three proposal to, uh, go in there so they can test all the beams to make sure that, uh, the building is structured for, like, if we use it for the exhibition space, that a buck, you know, a car or something, uh, a bus or a van can come in without collapsing the buildings, so it'd be, uh, safer.
That's good.
And, uh, yeah, they gotta measure all those beams and test the structure and, uh, give us the engineering problem that's necessary for us to work.
Is that including forty-eight thousand dollars, including drawings, or just a-
Yeah, the forty-eight, it includes assessment.
Assessment and, and, and draw-
If not, yeah.
Structure drawn?
Yeah, this is the door, uh, process.
There'll be auto CAD files?
Yes, so other, uh-
Through our top and bottom level?
Yes. Any questions?
Um, I did have a question on that, um. It was, uh, I can't even see this on here. It was speaking as to things that were, I mean, extra, um, things that might have to be done, that wasn't included in some of these, um, the costs. When they do it, are they gonna give us the, um, the cost for everything, or will it be as, whatever they find?
So basically, um, with this one, they're gonna give us a CAD file, and they're gonna measure the beams, and-
Right.
Basically, they're doing the engineering process.
Right.
And after that, uh, once we're ready to build out, they can use that same plan-
So what they're doing is estimating how much it's gonna cost to charge to do all of that work.
Uh, no. Uh, they're, what they're doing is they're assessing the integrity of the structure.
Right.
So it'll be about how many people can be in there, what you can use it for, you know, whether or not you can drive a vehicle. Because the building has been empty for so long, and because the plant, you know, was built in nineteen seventy-six. So be- because we might use it for a hundred different things, exhibit space, and let's say it's a concert hall, we don't wanna rely on a structural assessment that was done in nineteen seventy-six. We want to know ourselves. So this is just about the integrity of the building. And what, um, you know, to, to Val's point, it'll be measurements about the steel and the capacity and the load bearing, um, but it won't be a cost estimate on what it is to build out.
That's under that description, right? And then the deliverable, project deliverables, is I think it's what, um, I was looking at some of that.
So I mean-
It may be cost if we have to fix anything.
Right.
Like, yeah, like if something has to be fixed or shorted, or-
Right.
Yeah, I don't know the-
Okay, so they'll run it until they go in.
Yeah, they're assessing also, you know, they'll do the drawing for, you know, plumbing and all that. So let's say we decided to put restaurants or something like that, you wanna know what the, what the tap the line for.
Okay, I have a little question, uh, about the three costs that we have. Look like the P E structure, in, it's a little bit confusing between the P E structure associate and the fourth one is the, uh, I'm gonna say, can I pull it down, try to get the name of the company? The Greenboro Pharaoh. The Greenboro Pharaoh in the, uh, quote, is also say P E structure and associate. And so they, the same, they, uh, different company.
Uh, they're, they're different, P E is one of the company, the other one, uh, is, uh, is three different costs.
So, and I was talking to-
Among, the, the, among three, they only two have the, uh, the, the total cost. The Greenboro Pharaoh and the P E. The other company, F E stable, like, just, it doesn't have the price, like, just the label cost for employee. It doesn't have, uh, information about how many hour would the project take? So there are no way for us to have a, an understanding how much is the cost if we go with this two, with this company. So we left the two, and the Greenboro Pharaoh have a lower price. Why have we not recommended the lower one, the one with lower cost?
Um, cause we did, uh, we actually did a walkthrough of the building, and, um, P E is the one that we feel like they, they understand the structure the most. And they, they deal with big, big projects before, and we feel like they, they can get the job done, uh, they, uh, pass the time, and I mean, their pricing is a little higher, but they, they can get it done.
The, the Greenboro Pharaoh's under, have the fact that, let's say, P E's constructor, constructor and associate, and they have the same, uh, contact person, are you sure they are not related?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure-
It appears that they, they have some relationship already. It, it seems as though the P E, the, the first information that we have requested information from Green, from the Pharaoh group, because the memo was directed directly to the contract person for the first contractor. So, I mean, next on what was provided to us, there is a relationship.
Yeah, well, as I was explaining to Mayor Pro Tim before the meeting, what I, which is why the, the P E structure, structural and associates, I think that they aren't, they're one company, but they're two organizations that make the similar company. And the structural guy outsources his skill set to more than one company, is my guess. And so, now, we, but again, we did not ask that specific question, which is why I think that he, you know, he wins either way. So choose one company or the other, he may be doing structural, uh, assessment for both teams. Uh, because as often we see, just like Lowe Engineering and Shear last meeting, is that some companies have to outsource certain pieces of their information. So, um, I do think that the, the structural assessor, uh, works for two different companies, uh, in this bid process. Or, I should take that as a proposal.
Well, we're trying to do, uh, and make sure we get the most effective cost. And since we have one, uh, doesn't give us the total cost of the project, and the other kind of relating one to the other, should we search for another company, another price, so we can have, uh, competitive, um, uh, price that we could have?
That's certainly-
Without the confusion of the appearance of the relationship that, you know, we've been providing information for, it, it seems as though there would be, it would be good to have a, an additional understanding of competitive cost. Because right now, we're looking at three, but two of them are believing.
All right. The mayor is here, so he's going to lead the meeting.
Lots of things going on out there.
And, and if I may, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. So, and, and I'm trying to figure out why I have the wrong number, but, uh, I can't, so, um, I just, I wanna make sure that the Johnson Controls number six, the service agreement is not twenty-one thousand, it's, it's six thousand eight hundred and seventy-three. So, I don't know where that, I don't have that.
Okay, thirteen thousand number?
The thirteen thousand number is correct, and the, the second one, on item six-
Sixty-seven three?
Yes, six, six thousand eight hundred and seventy-three.
No, I'm-
Uh, yes. So Mayor, would you like Johnson Controls to come back up?
I do. All right, so we got V A V boxes on a sixty-ton air conditioner at the top, and we got, uh, some other things down at the bottom.
Correct.
We're basically taking over where Siemens is running something right now, and we're trying to clean it up.
Yeah.
So explain that a little bit from a standpoint, how the function's working at the top section, and then how those controls are dealing with that at the bottom, either from the adjacent wall or into a computer system that's a lot, and what's, what's not doing, what's not working?
So, I guess right now, you have Siemens' brain engine, whatever you wanna call it. Um, and there's issues between the Siemens and the Johnson Controls hardware. Um, so we would be putting back in Johnson Control Brain. So we would basically rediscover all the devices and everything in that building, we're talking amongst each other, and then that-
So you've got certain power, but the one you're talking about, you've already dealt with, is on the roof, right? As it were, you know, so-
Well, I see we made some repairs, um, and some upgrades, compressors and replacements, but nothing control-wise has been done of that, that main, you know, roof.
Basically, that's something, you know, Johnson Controls basically built, these equipment, right?
Right.
And what about the V A V boxes down?
Yes, they are all, all the devices and hardware in those units, from the one or two we looked at, they were all Johnson Control, um, devices. You just have a Siemens front end and back end, which is the brain.
Right, certain power, is it down in a, a desk somewhere?
Uh, actually, it's in the, if you go down the backside of that building, where the, uh, loading dock is, there's a little left room. Um, it's actually sitting in there in a box. So we would just have to remove it.
Not in a physical box, but there-
I mean, no, if I go, um, a panel, sorry, so, yeah. So it would be removed, the, the, uh, JCI or Medisys N A E would be installed. And then the controls taken would do a rediscover, employ all the devices in, and at that point, he would go through each item, and if there's an issue, maybe address on the block, and I'll, you know, step back, say, this one, we still just want to address this, and just keep moving on. And eventually, when it's all said and done, you will have full control of that building under Medisys, under JCI.
Okay, and then how expandable is this? I realize that each one of the original controls, you know, if you're talking about maybe the control system upstairs, downstairs, or- we got some expanded space next door.
Yes. Scott's mother, man, it's gonna be one of you wanna stand?
Yeah, yes, that's your question, you can, you can answer it, you can definitely answer it. Yeah, you, you can expand it, for sure.
Okay, and then we're, we're talking about something that we're not buying outdated technology, where the, how those, basically, the software we're using?
Uh, yeah, so the rights is still in this version right now, that we would have did.
So we're, we're not buying, you know, eighteen eighty-four, so we're presenting seven, seven three.
Plus the what's over there, everything's wireless, that's why we're able just to discover it, which is why Siemens was able to just come in and go on top of ours, cause they just discovered it over back there. So we're gonna pull it back into the JCI front, you know, JCI system.
Okay, from, from the standpoint, just the lady and people that are out there, I mean, it's obviously not functioning correctly. We're in a scenario where we're leasing out a service, and, you know, those are very dear clients of ours at this point, losing some of that revenue. But, yeah, the director's in there, you know, it's, uh, actually doing some special. Right, and we have several, you know, outbreak out rooms and, and hallways. I, I realize that some energy efficiency might be lost there too, so power bill was a question really different. Cause I mean, we never, you lost some of that earlier in the year, absolutely, you know, facility costs fifteen thousand dollars over panel. One of, one of that's gotta be, you know, some of that's gotta be H V C, larger quota.
That's your biggest user, a lot, so.
And then this is, uh, there's about four pieces of equipment out there?
There's three, which up here, it's an action, did the P M's on today.
Okay, so off, uh, the, the-
You got sixty-ton, right, you got sixty-ton, fifteen-ton, I'm not sure we got a, you know, one of those. The sixty-ton's a wild power, which is, I just-
Cause I don't know where it work?
Um, it, it's running great. Um, there was some lack of maintenance, obviously, in the past, and I found a nice, extremely dirty coals, which can drive, you know, make the gear work a lot harder than I have to, obviously, drive and energy cost up. Um, and then the whole building not controlling properly, you know, distribution of air or whatnot, can, you know, definitely cause, you know, cause to go up too. So once you get full balance and full control of everything, um, you know, then, uh, you might see some energy costs or savings.
So the, the first series of money we expect is basically for replacing out the tandem compressors.
Correct.
They get back up production, and then the two that you have here, you know, I know we got it broken down into separate sections. Is, is there a way you can kind of ring and determine just why, you know, what those, what those actually does?
In a nutshell, the one is gonna be, you're basically taking the same brain out, and put a JCI brain back in, and take it completely back over. The other option is a service agreement with own the Medisys system, where we would schedule a guy, instead of you calling us, we would schedule a guy quarterly to go through the entire system to make sure it's operating properly. And if he notices something that's not, he may be something he can adjust on the block, or come and give, say, hey, we got this issue with this box. Or if it be a mechanical issue, you can call me out and say, hey, we got a failed, uh, fan in one of the fan tire box, so we got a fault fuse because of, like, the heater's not running, or whatnot, that's, that's how all of it works. And then the software, I think, I think it's a hundred version. Let's say you go from eleven, like our, our iPhones, every six weeks, they see the one update, second, second, third.
So the subscription we've come out to, it's, it's already built into the cost, it would be, only time you'd ever have a cost associated with that is if the device itself became obsolete for some reason, which happens, cause all that's driven by it.
Those are like ten, twelve years old, but that, but that default dinosaur, I don't think.
No, no, I'm talking about like that engine, because sometimes it resides, it's like X P, like, we had a big thing, cause we were Windows-based, and X P wasn't supported anymore, so we had to, the device had to be replaced, and we, we offered incentives to do it. So some of the things that drive it-
Microsoft back, kind of?
No, we're, um, Linux, sorry, Linux. We, we, but we went away from it recently.
Very recently.
Very, very recently. That was just by example of the device, it still worked, but it wasn't supported technology anymore, and not even by JCI, right?
I think we found that band-aiding this over a period of time is not conducive to being very smart with that one. I, I just want some assurance that, you know, this will get us where we need to go. When all those things break, that's not a problem, I mean, it's, it's not that, that type of problem. Um, and then I need to know that it's got expandability, and-
Yes.
That you got the crash season, you know, come out there and, you know, when I give you a phone call, you got, we got, I mean, I love you do this remotely now. We lose money at that time.
Yeah, we just talked about, uh, the internet access, and we could, we actually pull it out from, the technician on call could just pull it up from his home to make the first guy, hey, it's mechanical, it's, it's controls and dispatch, make sure we send the right person, you know, which helps a lot.
And Miss Sylvia brought the question earlier before you arrived, that, uh, that there is, regardless if you do the, the P M piece on the control side, you still have twenty-four seven service, so if it fails at any given time of the day, um, you know, after we're seven to four, I think four o'clock, our time pulls over to our after-hours, from the service, and they will call and dispatch. Either controls taken, it's control rated, or mechanical taken, it's mechanical rated. The remote access actually can take away some confusion because of the guy can remotely, and say, okay, well, if, everything seems to be operating, we're looking at the program or the operation, and it's the mechanical guy, you know, you know, either way, kind of, sick and save time on who the right person is coming out to address your issue, I totally understand.
So, so this, let's say the thermostat's on the wall, or the sensor on the soft wall, they're pretty much stained. All you're doing is just reading it in terms of what's in, so that's not some of the original Johnson Control equipment.
Everything's stained, but the engine, I mean, everything's stained.
So, so everything it seems to add is basically going-
All they really added was that, they replaced our engine with theirs.
That's right, so, so then this comes back to, I wanna call it an original, because that's not necessarily true, but it all becomes a Johnson Control product, service, equipment.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Other questions?
Well, I do wanna point out, Mayor, cause you missed it, that the gentleman here with us was actually originally-
He did it originally.
He don't look old enough to be here.
Obviously, it was good, though, I said, yeah, he said, I know that job, I did it originally, I'm like, yay!
Now, that's a process, it says two things, one is the company treats you well, otherwise we wouldn't do that. Um, and we know how difficult, especially that safety system is. Um, I, I, I play in that world just a little myself, so, um, but that was, uh, they told me it was a torn piece of equipment. Not nearly as a network, you know, they're gonna see a track, you know, it's a-
And exactly, you go to the rave, you're like, really?
And then tandem compressors aboard mine, especially since they're not the same type, and you go, well, you know, I believe it's time to find out who made this stuff and, uh, call them back.
We appreciate that.
It's, uh, it's a smart move on our part, and if, if things start to move in the right direction, yeah, then you're gonna start- It's a, it's a smart move on our part, and if things start to move in the right direction, I think you're going to start seeing some expandability that's going to happen there. We certainly use some of those, again, it's going to be equipment related.
Sure.
Long-term, how we set it up in the operation, we've got any energy efficiency issues, how to break it apart from the zone standpoint, things like that. Hopefully, soon, having, you know, some mass build, so we know what's there, so we're not playing quite so much outside of, we are, at least count.
Just have Billy reach out, and he'll, whenever he all needs something, he'll be timed to jump on as quick as we can, so whatever we can do it over here.
Any other questions from Council?
Thank you. For this service agreement, you're saying that we are covered already, but if we do not get the service agreement, how are we going to be charged for a call?
It would be our, I mean, it would be our hourly rates, I mean, honestly, if you call outside of the service agreement, you're going to pay the hourly rates.
Okay.
And these are, this isn't a little small stuff, in other words, you're, you're calling major mechanics, if you want some idea that you're not last, you could say, it's July, it's hot, these guys have service experience, so somebody else, they're going to get those customers first, we're going to get, tell us when we can. It's usually more cost-effective, especially on a bigger piece of equipment, so it's not a little, that's a piece of equipment we're talking about.
Yeah, not your house, right?
Which was.
So if we do not get the service agreement, is there a time limit on, you know, like, before it expires, before, you know, you have to get?
The only thing is, if you, like, say you do the upgrade, you go with just the system, and then we release a revision that comes out, we're eleven now, and say it goes to twelve, we wouldn't, we wouldn't sell you a subscription, because you've already let your system get behind the current revision, does that make sense?
It's, unfortunately, it's a unique building, you know, and I think with unique buildings, with unique H K C issues, especially with all the V A V boxes and stuff, it's a lot. If you've got to, you've got to play that regularly down, so, and that building is really optional, I would think. And I think Warren's done a pretty good job of getting our losses down to some reasonable, I hate losses, period, you know, but, you know, we're losing roughly three hundred grand, probably down into like the hundred thousand, it's a change rate.
About, well, three hundred thousand, then we got it down to a hundred fifty thousand, and now we're declining as we speak.
So one day we might break even. That day. I saw Chris smile, I'm not sure what that means, you, that's really, really good, or good luck.
We're going to get Chris to believe, but.
But anyway, we appreciate, any, any other questions from Council? Ms. Knight?
Alright, no more questions.
Okay, Ms. Tran?
I'm glad.
Okay, perfect, we'll take, call Minister to get us a cup of coffee, we'll start the regulations.
You guys have a good night. You do realize that Gil didn't make the whole review of the meeting agenda?
So from, from the letters of intent, you know, from, I realize this is a new slide, they aren't working, but, like I said, nobody's trying to keep anybody out of the loop here, talking that. But we had interest, you know, we're going to do, our econ team is giving you the number of people for a few months now, and we moved away, I believe, from no's to may's, and that's, that's a big deal for this city. And to be able to do that, you know, it requires an interest of being in the minds of both parties, in other words, if Chris has an interest in it, you know, it's, it's not as simple as just saying, you know, exciting, you know, there's a number of entities involved in the city itself, maybe the developer or your self-house. And not all of these properties are in prison condition, and we got to be able to figure out how we're going to do to make that happen. Useful portion of it is going to be on the private sector, but some of it, because we are the owner of the property, it's going to be on us, or the developer, or you, but that's, that's the first one, is if you have to look at a milestone, you know, like you look at warrants and say, you know, if you're headed in the right direction, milestone eventually be breaking. Well, the milestone for us in this city is, is to have a number of people, who are you dealing with, and now you're, you're having the scenario of you start to feel a little positive about where you're going. And that's starting to fill in some back spaces, and so you will have seen, whether it's in the reports, I know the city council gets it, where the businesses are, and other things like that. Those are the private sector, those are people, you know, like Popeyes, you want to locate here, things like that, but some of this is now on cost. It's now moving in structural engineer assessment for number seven, we can't move until we know those handles, alright? So we know we have letter of intent on that one, we've got a really good lead, maybe a sign opportunity there, and we also know that we had some, some very good discussions. I've had a non-disclosure agreement for those, but let's put it this way, there's, there's a few folks that used to be in this city, that operate businesses in this city, who have expressed an interest to come back.
Oh, yeah, I, I think you would be free to, to say this.
Okay, and again, this is theory until you get to there, but for those of you who remember the last decade, Gus injury, that used to be on Mount Sinai, you know, there, there's a strong interest in the Old Town Hall, maybe bringing location. For those of you who remember Seraphina's, which also used to be on Mount Sinai, it's got a secondary location down off of Eagles Landing. You know, the tough is tight, is, is not there, for those who remember, his, his bread is warm, and of course, Chris was tough. So the good news is, we're not going to do it, Chris was dealing with somebody else, and that'll, that'll be awful. And the individual who did Chrisell's, basically was a jazz club, that was available to say, has an interest in a house of blues concept, which is jazz, and things like that. And we in some cases have documents in our hands, where several hundred thousand dollars is about to be deposited, all we have to do is get to some agreement. Most of these agreements are non-binding, and the way you go from non-binding to something that's real, is you have to now look at what you have. Both players need to understand what it's going to take to produce the vision, both their side and ours, and ours has to have at least some standards, but, and we're there. And, you know, if the cards were just in the right spot, all three of those properties become locked on, just like that. So I've seen the financials, I believe them, we've also had expressed an interest in a couple of the shops, and you said they were open for the short period of time that, you know, we were paying attention, and did more than that. That's not bad, that really is, and I don't think any one of these, that the average person would look at and say, well, that's terrible, like, we're kind of bottom of the barrel, or something, it's not going to be a good job for the city. And then obviously, we have, you know, more, and so that's what I think you're going to start to see, is now we're no longer clinting, we've captured some stairs, and now we've got to deliver them. So whether that's, you know, a vacant space, and we talk to a potential player, and finally get somebody so that we can leave that vacant space. We got to do leasing, and that leasing is what binds into a property, and that eventually is what's going to lead to a written benefit settlement for someone. So that's, that's a big deal, and people that are involved in that, that's bound, that's ready, you know, a couple of the players got caught up. I mean, council itself is obviously pretty, you can, you can basically, you know, thank the effort that you put into that, just to be able to have this discussion, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And part of that is also your business association, some of the signs that we're talking about, different things, it's, it makes it a little easier to sell when it looks like you've got a city who's paying attention. We have room to grow, we have room to go, so code enforcement, we could have some discussions about that, we can do that, right? We have some things that we can do from looking out for our business community, we can do that, we have some things we can do in terms of being responsive as, as a city to our employees, our citizens, our business. So we're not complacent, I, I just definitely want to say, the first employee, I want to be the first one to sit down and go, that takes some effort. So let's look at, you want to get back into the purchasing card policy there, Chris?
Sure. So currently, we have, I would say, no more than half a dozen employees that have a individual P and C credit card to make purchases at director level. And a corporate card is different than a P card program, whereas a corporate card, there's, you really don't have the administrative controls in place that you do with a P card program. So one of the, the differences is, we, we determine who, which employees would be assigned a card to use, and, and we're also allowed to determine for what purposes. So we could, for example, give a, an officer over the police department who may be responsible for ordering supplies and whatnot, we could issue a card to them to use for those type of purchases. It looks and acts just like a credit card does, that you have for personal use, but we're able to put in stipulations, how much can be for each transaction. For example, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar limit for things required to get quoted out, we can set it per transaction limit at twenty-five hundred dollars. So you're able to do that, you can set a transaction limit, a monthly limit, et cetera, for each individual employee. So for a director, it could be five thousand a month, but for administrative assistant, maybe they only need five hundred a month. You're able to set those controls, and you're also allowed to say where they can use the card. So we can authorize it to be used at Office Depot, and specifically forbid it from being used at a casino. If an employee was to try to go to a casino and use their P card, it would be declined, regardless of what kind of limit they have. Another advantage of the P card program, with the central administration, we're able to log in both the user and a administrator, upload receipts, code the transactions, do a lot of things within the P card system, download those records to import into our financial software, rather than having to key in each transaction into the software, so it saves some time there. And the biggest thing that I want to accomplish is to get rid of a lot of these small checks that we're having to write. Banks will tell you all the time, it costs X number of dollars to, to write a check, from the time you get the invoice, you run it through the approval system, and you run it through the, the accounting software, and then you actually print the check and get the signatures and everything else to go with it. If I can take, say, twenty or thirty of those per month, and eliminate writing those checks and turn them into a credit card purchase, probably have to pay one bill, it's going to make the finance department operate a little bit more efficiently. So that's all the good things. With that comes the responsibility of the employees who have the P card to use it responsibly, and that's where the P card policy comes into play. It tells the employees, this is what your responsibility is in using this card, these are the things that you can do with it, these are the things you can't do with it. For example, you can't use it for personal use, that sounds obvious, but you'd be surprised. It does happen all the time, in fact, the state law was put into place because elected officials were using it quite liberally. One of my favorite stories, this was a representative for, a county that represented Doug Woody, and she took her daughter on a business trip, paid for it with the county's P card, and the justification was that she needed her daughter there for emotional support, or else she would not be able to do her job properly. Yet that was probably a little bit of a stretch, state got wind of that and said, no, from now on, this is going to be a requirement for all P card policies that get adopted. When an elected official has to use it, it has to have these requirements in there, even though we don't currently have any council members with cards, I would have included those requirements anyhow, because they're just good requirements. And then also, we'll make sure that employees that get a card assigned within the policy, it states that they will acknowledge that they've received and read the P card policy, and then we'll also have regular training, sometimes after the fact, when you do something, but, you know, routinely even beforehand, so I wanted a policy in place before we actually proceeded with the P card program itself.
And certainly, don't they allow you to shut it off until a certain point, in other words, I sent John out to Office Depot?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's another good thing, if the employees don't turn in their receipts on time, I, as the administrator, or whoever we decide in finance to be the P card administrator, could actually go in and turn off that employee's card temporarily, which is a lot easier than calling the bank, shutting it down, getting it reissued, we can turn it off temporarily, the employee tries to use it, suddenly it doesn't work, then they remember, oh, I need to turn in my receipts, and then we can immediately turn it right back on. So it gives us a lot more flexibility than what we have right now, and hopefully, we'll streamline some things in finance and allow us to not have to write as many checks for small dollar purchases.
Comments, Christine?
I noticed some IRS language back here, what, what, are there any services?
Actually, actually, because of the way the IRS laws are written, and the U S Treasury has taken the position that if we use our P card to make purchases with a vendor, the bank is actually paying the vendor, not the city, so we would not be required to issue a ten ninety-nine or anything of that nature. That's really the only IRS regulation that would typically apply, fortunately, that makes things even easier for us, for all these small dollars, we don't have to add them all up and determine whether or not at the end of the year, that employee would have to get a ten ninety-nine.
Ms. Knight?
I have no questions.
Ms. Tran?
I'm glad, thank you.
That I think is a good idea, I mean, set time, set paper.
That one, my emotional support option. I'll get, that's, of course, alright, third-party property damage, there's a couple in here that we should probably discuss about first, I'm sorry. Overtime here in the Massacre, we already done that big class of cameras, and charge, and that's going to be ten, come back two, a flock priority list, chief, other chief?
Just remember, at the last meeting, we had asked the police department to give us a list of if they, if you were going to fund additional cameras, what would be the priority list, and it's in your.
I'm going to really just prove a couple.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's just if moving forward, if you want to put more in, that would be there for a.
But the Mount Sinai part, because there's so many entrances right there, I'm not sure I would be affected. I think we choose, I think we chose funding raises versus, just hang on to this.
It's just for your information.
Any other questions related to that flock priority list? Well, allow some, some others, I'm sure we'll actually think of, but I was pretty serious about making sure we were in touch with. Any other questions related to that? Christine? Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Okay, moratorium for mixed use, so I assume that was coming up shortly.
So, I just want to clarify, by May, so the, remember, there are two.
Correct.
Alright, so the multifamily was the one we have the, the public hearing about tonight.
Next one's going to be.
And the next one, and the ad will run tomorrow, and the first reading will be on April twenty-seventh, and the second reading and the public hearing will be on May the eleventh, so that's your schedule.
Very similar point, is if we don't start paying attention to this, eventually, we're going to get something, I was just in a meeting, and a portion of the northern section of the city, some of the projects they're talking about there, very much in the feasibility range, are very much high-density, and this is going to be kind of interesting. At this point, it's like nobody wants to talk about it, because we need to do some studies. Generally, that makes me very nervous, because you've already implemented some things, or are headed toward implementing some things on something that you haven't studied yet. I'm not saying that they're wrong, I'm just saying, you know, I'm going to study buying your car after I've already bought it, I don't know about that. So makes me nervous, and I think the best way to do it is to, you know, make sure that what we have, you know, is what we want, and all that. Other questions related to that, any comments, Ms. Dean? Ms. Knight?
Uh, none.
Ms. Tran?
No question.
Purchasing card policy, we just had that discussion, we, that is the same thing, right? Third-party property damage?
So this is a company that I've worked with before, another city, they are affiliated with G M A. They are affiliated with GMA. They essentially have access to state's D and D records. They will go pull historical accident reports that happened within our jurisdiction. They will then determine based on the accident reports whether or not any city property has been damaged, at which point they will work with the car's insurance company to recruit damages that are due to the city. They keep a percent for their work in overhead and then they pay us the remaining portion. Common question may ask is, can we do this ourselves? Theoretically, yes, but it would be exhaustive work, very time-consuming.
Ross had an interstate life from 2015. Some theories we can, but it took us six years and we're within a three-month period of losing it, so.
And they're, and they're also experts in doing it. They, they can be a lot more efficient than we ever could.
Isn't there a computer program that they use, Exactivator, something like that, where that goes in and tells you kind of what damage really is versus, and that way, because we don't know. Somebody comes in and says, it's worth $20,000, and that's all my policy comes. An insurance expert can say, yeah, well, you know, your liability is higher than that, and this is what it really costs. So having an expert in your field, on your side, is certainly better than guessing. And it's certainly better than saying, well, you got two, you know, one council meeting to make a decision, or you don't get anybody at all. That's admirable.
And, and their percentage is relatively low, in my opinion.
It is, it is.
So we'll, we'll get four out of every five dollars returned to us, and then they keep the other, their share, so. My recommendation is to use.
We're not getting very much at all. They tear it up.
And they go backwards to, they'll go back two or three years at our request and recruit past losses as well.
Sweet. I'd be able to get a couple fences put back up. Other questions, Ms. Dean?
Yeah, with that, include like our marked neighborhood signs and bridges up on the road and stuff like that.
That's exactly what includes. Road signs, curb gutter damage, anything of that nature. Anything the city owns, stop signs.
Ms. Knight, comments?
I'll save my comments for another day.
Okay. Ms. Tran?
I'm coming.
This is probably the big one, retirement plan. We've already had, you know, some, some interesting issues a while ago. And we made some changes. They cost us, I think we had GMA sitting here telling us that it was going to be like 70,000. And then when it was implemented, just a few short months later, it was like 125,000. That's, that's, to me, in my world, if I was that far off, you know, I'd be looking for other employment. But, you know, it's GMA, they, they get to wing it, I guess. But that had a significant impact on the city's bottom line over multiple years. And that isn't anything that you're going to be able to get out of, per se. Then the question comes down to attracting employees and different things like that versus ten-year vest. Those people that are already in the system are going to stay in the system. This allows us to create some options that reduces the city's risk at some point, but also gives great flexibility to the employee. And it pretty much is, especially millennials, you know, they're, they're not staying here ten years anyway. And I know we just made a pretty historic, you know, change. And I know we're going to, you know, fix a few other things that we're not talking about. So that's a start in the right direction. But we've got to, we've got to be competitive. To remember that just how much I paid yesterday, it's the whole arena of what's out there. So pick it up from there, Chris.
Sure.
Did you have a chance to talk to each one of the councils?
I have extended the offer to talk with each of them individually, or, you know, at least, I know more than two have gone. But I have spoken with two at this point in time. Ms. Dean has indicated that she's familiar with DB and DC differences in some of the frozen times, and she may have some questions at a later time. And then I know Councilmember Knight was on vacation last week. And given the fact that we're actually not going to be voting on anything for two more weeks, if she wants to reach out and have some one-on-one time to get, dive into a little bit more of that, we'll be fine as well. But so far, the comments have been favorable and supportive.
And I will certainly take you up on that, Chris.
Absolutely.
I apologize for jumping in, but I appreciate that. I apologize, I was on vacation and I didn't respond. But I do want to have some one-on-one time.
And I'll be there for you, absolutely.
Perfect. And it's, it's, it's kind of in the weeds, you know, it gets down to.
Yeah, it's very, it is very technical. I mean, anytime you're talking about investing and whatnot, it can be confusing sometimes. So some, some one-on-one time is definitely helpful to kind of go through the questions and answers. And I think that's been very productive for the, the two conversations that we've had so far.
Any particular suggestion came out of it outside of what we're recommending?
No, I mean, both were with Councilmember Qua and Councilmember Tran. Both of them were very positive. They had excellent questions. And we went through and answered each of those. And I felt that at the end of the conversation, it was, you know, very favorable in what we're looking to do.
Have you talked to any of the actual city employees?
We have not talked to many of the employees. We have talked with the department heads. And the response there was favorable with the department heads that we talked with. All of them recognized that we're looking at recruiting challenges and, and looking for options that can make us a little bit more competitive and see this as an opportunity to do so.
What else to do, like, just the same way, grab somebody that just got here, see what they think, grab somebody who's been here forever, which we know he's got an option or she's got an option to keep it. Just, just so that we don't feel like it's just, you know, the, the top brass having an opinion.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
See if, you know, if what we think is a selling point really is. And they might tell us yes, they might tell us no. But at this point, you know, it's good information for us to make those decisions.
Absolutely. I'll give the each, the department heads have put some names forward for us to meet.
Do you want to explain a little bit about what the recommendations are?
I do want to say that one thing I felt did come out of your conversations was the suggestion to have a specific attorney addressing it.
Yeah, there, there was, you know, Councilmember Tran suggested that we have a government retirement lawyer, a specialist in government retirement law, look at the agreements before we actually vote finalize it. I'm not opposed to it. I certainly wouldn't anticipate anything negative to come out of that review. But I don't know that it necessarily would be bad to have that reassurance either, so.
Will they have a tendency to give you both the pros and the cons? And especially why not, do you have somebody in mind?
I do not, no. If council wanted me to pursue that, I mean, there's.
Give yourself a couple options, somebody you feel comfortable with, got good history, somebody that didn't wake up yesterday to claim themselves an expert. I know lawyers.
Well, first thing I do is I reach out to our city attorney and say, is there someone already on staff at your firm who is versed in this and that could work with us on this project? So that would be my first step, since we already have a relationship.
So the expectation would change then. We may not be able to get it on the agenda next meeting. It'll depend on that attorney's review time, right?
Yeah, and I, I think if we, if we want to gauge a little bit more feedback with the employees and everything, that, that would be.
Appreciate that.
I mean, I would need to come back and update council.
That's a two-reading time thing, right?
Yeah, it will have to be in ordinance. Well, our last retirement was ordinance.
Okay, yeah, amended ordinance.
Let's make it an assumption, and that way, we don't want to be taking at least a few reasons.
Yeah. I think as, as long as we have everything completed in the month of May, we can start open enrollment and education meetings with employees during the month of June. The board's life first starts, I think we're in good shape. And I can continue to work on the paperwork and the administrative side, even while we're doing some of this other.
But just to call this record, can you give me like a condensed version of what the opportunities?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're looking to do is freeze the current defined benefit plan for existing employees. They would remain in the plan. We can continue to earn credit and grow in the plan while our, while offering new employees a defined contribution plan. The main difference between the two is defined benefit, you're, you're setting what the retirement will be. Whereas a defined contribution, you're setting what the city's contribution will be. In both cases, they meet the requirements to continue to allow the city to stay out of the social security system for the city and the employee share. And we would continue to meet that minimum requirement.
Would an employee have the ability to opt in to the social security?
That, that is something that we're looking to do for existing employees who are in the DB plan now. We would give them a one-time option to opt out of the DB. They would take what they've earned as far as earning credits and money that's been in the plan now and be able to port that over to their own DC plan. But I'm, I'm recommending that we only allow that as a one-time option at the very beginning. You could, if you wanted, allow that option every year. But from everybody that I've talked to so far, it's, you get the decision to do so at the very beginning, and then after that, not many people really consider it. And I'd rather not have to go through the cost and calculations and figure that up every year. But I do think it would be good to offer it initially, because we may have some employees that's only been here two, three years who may want to go ahead and get into the DC plan, especially younger staff. It's going to give them an opportunity to.
I doubt the social security, but the ones that have been here a long time and haven't reached the number of hours, you know, that are required, you know, the 10-year number, they, they might be sitting there going, you know, social security is not a bad thing because there's some things that come with it.
Well, in both plans, they're out of the social security system. They would, they would not be in for either DB or DC.
Right, but and that's, right now, some of that's the same thing. In other words, they, they wouldn't be entitled to social security because they're, they're going to receive, you know, something.
Right.
Somebody would have to be a social security expert, which wouldn't be the worst thing to find out, is to make sure you're not going to contribute to something that you're not going to give you money for.
Yeah.
Right, so you can say, yeah, unless you're, you know, spend 15 years, it's not going to matter. Social Security's going to pay you anything anyway. Teachers, everybody who's ever been a teacher, it's a dollar-for-dollar number. You can make all kinds of money, and you never made any real money as a teacher anyway, but social security just grabs you all of that. And it's not an impressive picture from there. Others, I don't know, police and fire, that'd be a whole different question. Are there, any, any other comments from the finance officer on that issue? Christine? Ms. Knight?
I had no comments. Like I said, I will speak with Chris so that I can, you know, get my questions answered.
Perfect. Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Excellent. Mr. Qua? Annual city planning session. I know you love these planning sessions. So we've got one scheduled for nine o'clock, I believe, on the 24th.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got that on your calendar? I think we've allocated some time for each one of the departments to kind of come and talk to us a little bit, make a little bit of a presentation, and kind of give us an opportunity to ask them some really tough questions, to their goals and visions, and see what they're asking for. All that, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Tomorrow's Center Financial Update. Warren, I, I would have actually gotten it if I had read all the way down that far.
No, that's no problem at all. Good evening, everyone.
Evening, everyone.
He sounds so excited.
I'll be great this evening. Couple things to, to point out. I believe you guys do have the profit losses for both the month of March and the fiscal year 2021. Some good things there. There is hope. We saw a positive $2,000 for the month of March, and the deficit is decreasing for the fiscal year, for the, for the year. But something really great, we, since the last one I was here, which was the first council session of last month, we brought in $50,304.19 in the bank. So things are looking good. And it's just fantastic to see that. It's giving us, you know, it's building our morale, it's building our hope, so, you know, that's important as well.
I'm going to interrupt you just a minute.
Yes, sir.
So we, $300,000 in the hole last year, we're $63,000 free months left to go. Would you agree? So these are accurate?
Yes.
That's pretty damn impressive, right there.
We are going.
There's lots of ways to save money, right? We can all, assume we have to go out there and like, you know, print it. But if it's a cost that we've been absorbing for a while with this theory that there's nothing we can do about it, you effectively prove that that's not the case in a very tough environment on top of that.
And I would, if you will, mayor, indulge me, but to the extent that Warren is invested in his sort of ownership of the center, one of the ways he saved money is that he and Lee do a lot of the breakdown and put-up of the rooms, the tables and chairs. So we used to have a service that came in and broke down the room after an event and set it back up for a next event. And Lee and Warren are doing that themselves. And because they recognize in this pandemic, it was critical to cut every corner we could. So I've been very impressed with the sort of, just like they're really rolling up their sleeves and, and, and taking the bull by the horns that they've done over there. They've done an impressive job.
And actually, that is sustainable, you believe? Figure it out. Sustainable?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's, oh, come on, that model?
No, the losses.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Once we get into you making money, I'm going to be fired for that. But the losses, I mean, if you can hold that, that's, I'll give you that one.
But I did want to give those to you based on what she said. The reason that we did that was because that one comment that she made said, contract labor, watch that. And then, you know, that's what, that's what it came down to. So we figured out a way to make it work.
So we just spent all kinds of money for you, you'll appreciate that.
Couple other things, so we are booking as fast as we can. Calls still are coming in. There's been no changes. Actually, the changes have been great. It's been, I mean, to the point where I'm actually bringing the receptionist in tomorrow because there are a couple other things happening in the building. And we just have to deal with a lot more calls coming in, so that's.
How, how did the movie theater stuff go?
Oh, yeah, it was, it was great.
Don't steal thunder.
Keep going, keep going.
So yes, at this point out, I always mention this, and I will continue this until everything's open. Our major competitors are still closed for catering events. So we still, right now, remain the only game in town. Don't we, you know, for that science fall, I should say. We are working on the weekday business, and we are also trying to focus on our 2022 business. All our regulators, get those lined up, get them secure, because most companies are going back to in-person meetings beginning in 2022, based on what I'm hearing, you know, here to the street. We, so, oh, yes, so The Walking Dead, they wrapped up last week. And the Marrow Center and Dark Space will be seen in season 11, episode three of The Walking Dead. There's some cool shots, I got some cool background stuff, so we'll see if they've seen it, so we'll post it up. We can't do anything until October in terms of telling everyone, until, you can't do it until the episode airs. So after that, all that's a rock from Tumble World. So.
Is it cool stuff?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it was cool how they transferred. Did you see the video?
Oh, he had to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I thought you said I couldn't share it till October.
On social.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll take, I'll text it, yeah.
Yeah, so the way they transformed, I mean, actually, we walked out a little. Actually, I was like, my heart just goes like, oh, crap, I thought I was in the wrong place. It was crazy how they did it, but it was cool. And Billy was a great assistance with that, with Dark Space and all that squared away. There was a lot there, so thank you very much. And Chief Swink and the Fire and Launch Department, it was, it was just a lot of moving parts. So it was a team effort, so everyone did their part. The article that I mentioned to you guys last time about smart market meetings, it was published on People the First, I believe you guys did, you see the copy. If anybody wants to read it, it's an excellent article. I did leave a few copies over here. Please put the nut, read it. It's called 15 Bits Tomorrow, and it's a wonderful read. Because of this, I've gotten a total of, I believe, six, yes, six calls, uh, six calls, and put out five proposals, and one of them has converted over to a $4,000 contract. So this is really good stuff. Let's see, oh, Kaiser Permanente. So Kaiser Permanente used to be with our building, based on the history that I saw for the last, I believe it was six or seven years. But for the last two or three years, they, they were just like a broken stock. And I, I called them and, you know, and actually it was due to some, I couldn't see the information that Chris needed. And so we got Kaiser back for the southeastern region. So that was really good. She, you know, she, they left for various reasons, disappointments, but all this in the past, I invited them and their team to come for lunch, you know, of course, on us. And they said they'd love to, and they actually missed the Marrow Center. And they are excited to come back starting in 2022. So, good stuff.
Any questions for?
Aggressive.
Thank you. Christine?
I know, praise is my, my people self, yeah.
Oh, good. Ms., Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
I'm glad.
Excellent, excellent. And hopefully we'll have some HVAC working for you at a better rate.
Yes.
Things like that, so good, good work there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, Dr. Augustine, Medical Director, costing us some more money. Chief, Dr. Augustine, Medical Director, costing us some more money.
Who's like for that big case, yes? So some of y'all may know, Dr. Augustine's been our medical director since 2012. He does an outstanding job. He's nationally recognized in his field. He is the spokesperson, medical spokesperson for the International Association of Fire Chiefs, which is a huge feat. He does weekly webinars on the IEOC website and things like that. He comes to the City of Marrow and does training with our departments. About once every two months, he's here this week, comes three days in a row, so he can get all three shifts. This past year, he just did an amazing job during the pandemic. He came and spoke to y'all, excuse me, gave you an update on COVID and that sort of thing. He has been a huge asset in getting us where we can vaccinate the public, getting the testing for our employees and for the elected officials, just above and beyond. Since 2012, he's received the same compensation. And here we are, nine years later, and he has asked for an increase. He says he's well below market, and I would just like for y'all to consider giving that increase from $7,000 to $12,000 a year. The budget impact in this fiscal year would actually reduce by $1,000 because typically he would invoice this in January for $7,000. We would pay that as his annual fee. And so he's wanting to do a split payment of $6,000 twice a year. So if y'all agree to the $12,000, out of this fiscal year, it'd be $6,000 instead of $7,000. So I would appreciate your consideration of this.
Comments? Ms. Dean?
Well, I feel kind of bad, 2012. I believe that, you know, he's deserving.
Ms. Tran?
I think I'm good with it.
Ms. Tran?
I'm good with that.
And Mayor, I just want to say too, to reiterate some things that Chief Swin was saying. When we were all sort of in a frenzy to understand it, like what was coming, what was happening, what should we be doing, how should we be responding? I mean, Dr. Augustine spent some hours with your city manager on the phone with great level of patience because, again, I needed to understand it so I could help everybody else understand it. So I just, I agree that he has gone above and beyond. He's been a stellar presence in our fire department for so many years, and I just, of course, I'll always tell you, tell him how much we appreciate him. And if you all remember, he came and did a presentation for you all in 2020, wasn't it? Yeah, it was not this year, it was out earlier.
Oh, you were there. But it's nice to not feel the panic because there was a lot of that out there at the time, and you know, good decisions, and lining up shops and things like that. That doesn't happen by accident. So we got to put it on the agenda next time.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, I think we are really fortunate to be one of the cities to have, you know, the clinic right here set up and be able to do that. So thank you, and thanks to all the staff for that because, I mean, it worked like clockwork, you know, in and out. No one is waiting, no complaints. Excellent, thank you.
And let's take the moment to remind yourselves to be proud that we were also one of the first cities to have a testing site. And so, you know, that was a very big feat that we were able to accomplish with fire department and the police department, and all because of your approval. So, I mean, I just feel so proud that we can say that we were one of the first cities to have a testing site, and now we're a city that has a vaccine site.
And I'm all tested, I'm all shut up and everything, I feel like Superwoman.
Thank you, Chip. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
The kids see, but I still feel super.
You need more time.
Kind of thing to hear when we're talking a little bit about the district public restrooms accessory restoration.
Those, though, well, you see proposals that went out, all the proposals that went out. We sent them to 24 different contractors, and they have various deadlines. I think the first one is?
Twelve.
The 12?
Yes. Restroom?
Was it the 12?
Yes, ma'am.
Today, yesterday?
Yesterday.
I believe it was, but. But I saw some porcelain damage. It doesn't look that great, right? What's that, Chip? I'll tell you some porcelain damage. In other words, you break a sink, you break a canoe.
Yeah, it looks like when they went in, didn't do a lot of damage to the walls. Woman's restroom has one tile that got knocked out. And then the toilets have been sitting there, and they're pretty bad off. People went in and kind of used the toilets, but weren't able to flush them. But, and then in the men's restroom, they damaged the mirrors, damaged the porcelain. All in all, it wasn't as bad as we anticipated, so that's a good thing.
And while we're potentially into replacement, porcelain is relatively inexpensive, right? I mean, you buy it in the home depot. We need to, you know, buy the prison ones, you know, the metal?
The stainless?
The dentists?
That sounds better, stainless steel.
Stainless steel, stainless steel, yes, stainless steel, that's what I meant, yeah.
I tell, me personally, I would say yes because of what we have experienced. I think it would be a valued asset to us to have that in there. It would be easier for us to maintain and clean from a cleaning perspective.
Can, is that a scope change in terms of what's in there? Because it's just porcelain, you're going to buy something different.
No, we could, I mean, when, if we, when we get the proposals and we could just contact the people that submitted a proposal and see if it, you know, changes their proposed amount all that much. But I wouldn't resubmit it out for just that change. I'd wait to see who responded.
Well, and then this would allow us to use the facilities when we have different events out there, say just a little on porch jobs and a few things like that.
Yes, sir.
That's good. Any questions related to what you're seeing there on restroom restoration?
No, sir.
Ms. Dean?
It's not good.
Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
No questions, I just want to.
I'm probably taking these out of some type of order. So let's at least look at and make sure we have. We have some, her final design hasn't been submitted yet, right?
No, sir.
The one that's got Estrada on it, that's that little corner piece over there at the university, not the main corner, but the other one. There's going to be an upgrade to this.
Is that the one with the house on it?
No, 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 it's the other vacant piece that we got. It used to have the old garages on it. So it kind of lays out that corner, and you're getting kind of like a draft idea, trying to come up with something where we could do some drive-throughs for some restrooms, create some, you know, maximum density as far as retail, hopefully some small businesses, and the ability, hopefully, for them to be able to buy it. In other words, it's like a pad sign, they're going to put their own business on there, and they'll make it work. But we got to have some designs that make sense for everybody. This one was pulled from the Maxwell, which is up in Roswell, actually Alpharetta, and that exists. So if somebody wanted to go up and take a tour, you'd be able to go out and kind of see a lifetime of this, as real there. And then the last page kind of gives you some visuals. Whenever you see visuals like this, just remember if you actually get past that, there's not much to this. We're not, you know, we're not making it extravagant, and the black sections that you're seeing on the dark brown, you know, those are regular doors and windows, right? So brick exterior facade, regular doors and windows, and we've got, let me see something.
I'll play.
No, we're all good. Because I could have walked past all kinds of things, I wouldn't know the difference right now. But it's important for everyone as they start to look at those designs, you know, that's what's helping us market the properties. You know, standing out there and just having vacant grass isn't very helpful. So you have to show what could be done, where your space might be, and what we can do from there. And that's what, including the stuff that we've got for the exterior of the mall in terms of the properties we have over there, and, you know, the visuals now in terms of Old Town Bar and actually having some of those buildings cleaned up, it's a big difference. When you go in there, and now I feel like we're an NBA player trying to recruit somebody. You turn the fountain on, you know, you bring your client out, you can kind of stand right there, let the district start to sell itself a little bit. It makes it easier, you know? So slowly but surely, all of these will come into play. This one's a little more complicated because it's a dark construction. So any comments on what you've seen here? Just note that there is still a final product that hasn't been submitted yet. I'm just touching base, and it's a working product, you know, permanent, and ultimately, you never really know until you get into, you know, some type of real design, and that's, I said, right, you still got to read, you know, just like in the other one, it's not structural at this point because the building doesn't exist, you got to do geotechnical. We had a garage that was out there before. You want to do some small, you know, phase one environmental. That basically just says nobody's contaminated the soil, we assume that that's going to be it. I don't think that environmental will benefit, and it's not that expensive, but you want that in your back pocket. You start going over there, turn a little bit of dirt, and then deal with some silver. So comments on at least the initial design phase, Ms. Dean?
Oh, I, I'm ready for some, something different, you know?
You could walk there from the garden.
No.
At the end of that.
What'd you say? He's walking. They're all pleased.
Ms. Tran? Any thoughts?
Old lady?
Um, no, not today. I'll share my thoughts with the council at a later time.
Okay. Ms. Tran?
I, is this beside, and we could try to get the decide we're going to do it or we just have a visual idea of what would be to attract investors?
It's more of the visual to do the attraction. An example would be your road structure or your parking, get some type of negotiated section. We know that we have some driving abilities for at least two restaurants, and we know we've met with a number of restaurants, and I'll use Scooters as an example, which was a coffee-based one out in the Midwest. You don't see them here very often, there's two in Metro Atlanta. There's a sit-down version in Roswell, and then there's more of a square shoebox over on Camden Road and Marietta. And, you know, they've done pretty well in other locations. We obviously wouldn't want to just throw them in the middle of a parking lot or have them take up a tremendous amount of your space, and this would be a good location. And that means we could take local players, and so you could buy your restaurant or you could buy, you know, your building, which right now is not possible. We can subdivide buildings, but we haven't had anybody really produce that yet, so that's obviously option A. But ultimately, to be able to say, "Let's just use this one." Normally on an acre like this, what you're going to see is a Taco Bell or McDonald's, right? One building in the middle of the section, and the rest of it's just asphalt, and everybody parks around it. That's what you say. How much is that really worth to you as a city? A business license, a couple grand, you're going to pay, you know, maybe $10,000 in property tax. And that's total, that doesn't include what goes tomorrow, that just says it goes tomorrow. Now we change up, and I might get anywhere from four to seven businesses in there, and that means you're going to get four to seven business licenses, you're going to use much more electrical, you're going to have some abilities to use some offsite parking, which you already own, and starts to create some density, so you go into that. And this is things where we think that our local ability for them to raise this kind of money is easier. So you're not buying a $3 million shopping center, you're basically going to build your product from the ground up in conjunction. So if you look at, say, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, we don't know if that's going to be 1,200 square feet, 2,500 square feet. A lot of that would depend on what that person's going to do. That building might be pushed aside a little bit so you can build it in two different phases, and this would be just the same as it may be when we were doing this in the private sector. You're laying it out there, you're saying, "Here's my opportunity." You're waiting to see a player with an action saying, "I want to be there, and I'm going to do it." And I will say this, I have met with an individual on those retail shops, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and he's like, "I'll do it. Here's your problem, nail salon." You see, my point is, I'm not against a nail salon, but the bottom line is you're going to just treat it like every other shopping center that we have. Is that really the best we can do? I'm going to say, "No." It's not that I have any problem with any of the traditional beauty salon, nail salon, you know, the things that go in there. But, you know, if we're going to take the effort to make it happen and kind of work behind the scenes, you know, let's see if we can tease it a little bit and get something kind of neat. Now, maybe you don't get eight neat things, but maybe you get three or four, and then a couple.
Field.
You know, just small real estate office, maybe, you know, the farmer's insurance or something like that, all within the ability. So, but it helps us kind of understand where we have the potential to go. And ultimately, when this gets a little bit more of a heart of a concept, and you get at least one or two players lined up, then we'll come back through your P and Z again, and we'll approve it as a master plan for that site. And high net you would have, some things you're not seeing in here, you know, stormwater. If you look at the parking right there, there's some things about that where it's two-way parking, doesn't make any sense. At least they should put the parking on the inside or make it one-way. Good question. In this case, you've got a real small number eight, which is being used as a coffee shop. That's not realistic, and who would want to do it that way? And then we've only got one ability to do a drive-through, and we really want to. The main event section in there in the middle is still kind of public ability, and that's to be able to say 3,000 feet upstairs, figure out a few downstairs, and it creates some seating areas. And again, we're basically using this right from the private sector, you did it up in Alpharetta. Is it exactly?
No.
Yeah, but it's enough to use it for marketing. Needs to be a little better in terms of refined so that, you know, we can really be serious about it. But that's how it starts. We got an idea, you make sure everybody's kind of on board, somebody got to be able to pay for it, the private sector agreement, and at that point, we'll find out. But I do know I've had an individual who's willing to buy the strip center, and I think on that, you just pass. You know, if we were desperate, we could say yes, but I don't know that you would get any more than you already have. And one more time, we'd be selling to an outside investor who doesn't live in the city, and all he's doing is buying the strip after saying, "And we've already done that." And we know what they look like, and we also know, you know, what happens long-term. I'd rather have five or six independent players who own their own building. And I think those that have owned their own building treat it better, and it's an asset, it's an investment, and they can sell it with the business or the property or otherwise. So again, just good old-fashioned economic development, hardcore stuff. But, you know, everybody needs to walk through it. Stop me?
Oh, sorry. Maybe it's a zimmer.
Michael Way. Ball corn, Chip. I mean, that's one, we've got scopes of work from Lowe's Engineering. Want to talk about that soon?
Yeah, I mean, these are just the projects that we had identified earlier, the Mar Road medians, the Murphy Drive and the plate making and replacement of that bridge, the Reynolds Road path connection from the parking lot to the existing path, and then the just path maintenance on the path system.
So we're slicing into the little median there at Mar Road to keep people from smacking into the bridge.
Well, if you remember, Mayor, the engineer's suggestion was instead of cutting into the curve, to shift the median over and share the difference.
Yeah, I'll, but theoretically, that answers a portion of that question. I think long-term, and I mean, relatively soon, but we got to go, this is just one project, but that curve on Mar Road is still a speedway, they still go over that. And we've made some comments, we've had plans sitting on this back wall from Roy Ashley forever, or not forever, but a pretty damn long time. And whether it's this project, we were in a planning the other day, and we dusted off the J.J. and G. plan, which is now part of Jacobs, and that was the park space out here, you know? So we have owned a reasonable amount, let's say another acre and a half of property. We went through the trouble to get it at least visually laid out, and we never built it. And I think as we're coming off of COVID and we've got some opportunities, maybe you adopt the plan, and you say, "You already got that, right? You got the vision. Now let's do some quick ads, you know, so that our citizens realize that we're in their corner too, right? We got some resources, let's put in some extra park equipment, let's come up with a plan, let's take it in phases, and let's knock it out." We can stare at it, but why? You know, so we have more than enough plans that a number of councils have looked at, and we have them sitting in a drawer, you know? So I get that, but if we focus on the ones we have, whatever they are, wherever they are, we got more than enough to keep us busy, and certainly more than enough to add value in several different components. And certainly more than enough to add value in several different components, whether it's adjacent to, you know, somebody's residential property. We know we talked earlier about, you know, the, the big property guy over there on Meadowbrook, you know, what is the next plan for tying in the, the next opportunity for the trail system? How are we gonna go from the back of the cemetery to, for example, how do we do that in a, in a manner that makes sense? So that they have an idea of how, you know, how they get to your side of town, for example. And you gotta be able to say, yeah, some of it will be easy and some of it's not. But if we don't get into the designing of it, it'll never happen. And then if we don't use the design and we just put it in a box, that, that wasn't very effective either. So this is a, a consistency and I certainly say over the last little bit, you know, this council is doing a pretty good job of reaching into that little toolbox and, and saying, you know, we, we kinda said we were gonna do it and now do it, right? And I get it, everything's not gonna happen at one time, but do it. We've, we've got, you know, general fund money, which is basically employee-related, but we've got some splosh fund that we can't use for those other purposes anyway. You know, let's, let's, let's do what we're supposed to be doing and, and you are, but we need that pipeline, right? That pipeline says at some point, the things that you already know, those are gonna be done. North East Gardens is gonna be finished soon, maybe we can expand on that, but the point is, is it's, it's knocked out. You can do a ribbon cutting, but then we clean up the other space so that we can do the food truck deal, that's cutting. Some of these others, we have to wait for the private sector to work with us, right? So yes, that will take time, but what about the, the real public problems that we have? You know, they're, you know, you saw the list, believe you got a list eighty-five thousand, that's gotta be knocked out. And we, we know where most of this stuff is, you know, we, we know we talked about, you know, the entrance or the modifications to the bridge over at Northridge, right? There, there seems to be some discussion and this is a good one, I don't know if it's been, but we talked about the garbage? Northridge garbage, right? There, let's assume that all of us decided it's a great idea to just take our garbage and just chuck it out in the curb. And you go, no, you can't do that and we wouldn't let anybody do it. But we know a portion of our residents here do, they've been doing it for a long time and it's probably not the best answer. So you go, what's the, what's the best answer? This is what we're doing, this is what we want, leave us alone and you go, not sure that's a good idea. Then where could we put a dumpster over there? Theory is they don't really have a place. Well, that's not necessarily true. We own ten acres on the back of a dead-end section over there, we do. Why can't we go out and just allocate a section and say, I'll give it to you for a lease, an easement, something like that? And that way they have the ability. Now, now there's nobody getting a dumpster right in their backyard and restoring it.
Where is the acreage?
If you drove in Northridge condos, went all the way to the edge, drove past the pool, drove back a little bit for the turned left, that's the property you own, which is off.
Social Security building, the old social security building.
Yeah, off, at the end of Adams and Parkway.
Yeah.
You have to look on that one on a map to be able to sit there and go, well, why wouldn't somebody do something here? It's an easy answer, they don't own the property. And you go, well, who does? We did, great, you know, and so it's two hundred square feet out of a ten acre piece, not a big deal. But that would be a real answer or, you know, otherwise you're going, what are you gonna do? Put dumpsters in the middle of the property? You gotta know that's not an answer, leaving it the way it is, that's not an answer. And they can't control their own destiny no matter what. So somewhere in there, you know, obviously I think they would look at us and say, well, you created the problem. I don't know, throw garbage out in the middle of the curb is probably a problem, you know, but what is the solution? And they might choose a different one, but at least we have an option and to say, I think this is an option, I think there's an option that makes some sense. And it's something we can do, right? So that, that's fair. And we might need to visualize those a lot better, I get that.
There was no, no, no space to individual trash cans, you know, to keep.
Not there, I mean, there, there are some things you can do where today they, they actually would dig them into the ground, like pour a thing and you can drop a trash can in it and they look like a sprinkler thing and they pop up. I, I got a feeling that they would be less than agreeable based on the price of what that would take.
And with those very mature trees and tree roots.
It would, it would not be their first choice. Their, their first choice would be just to continue to pick it up, a pickup truck and leave it the way it is.
And use their dumpster.
But I'm getting going, I, I got a feeling that's gonna come full circle soon and at some point you just have to say, listen, it's common sense. Would you take your plastic bag and throw it out your front door?
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in any, in anybody's front yard.
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, you know.
But somebody may disagree, I'm sure somebody's got the corner unit down there, but you do things right. And, and again, nothing's ever perfect, but you can certainly look at it and say, I think it's, it's a good option. And it's something we can deliver and make an argument to them, to say, we're not, we're not just coming here hat in hand, we're, we're saying, here's some improvements that we think we can do on the back of Murphy Drive, here's some improvements to a challenge that they've had. And they're broke, they're, they're not gonna have an HOA, they're already charging some of the highest fees out there, they're like three hundred and fifty dollars a month, obscene numbers for an apartment or a condo project. And that's already driving down their valley. Those things should be selling for a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand right now and they're not. You know, they're, they're still barely breaking ninety-five, that's terrible. They were built in eighty-five and they sold for a hundred and twenty. We got houses now that are two and a quarter, usually the number is about a twenty percent differential between a good condo and a dead section and you're well off that number, you're almost up fifty percent. So if you were to try to add on to that and you say, well, if we got one more capital project for you to consider, I, I think you're, yeah. It's not gonna be a very participatory group, you know, but if you have a solution and a way to do it, and I think we do, then that becomes less of a, how much more do we have to raise to do it? And you say, well, we work in partnership with this, you got an HOA, right? So the HOA is the vehicle. And then it's just a matter of having legal talk to us and a few other things and see if we can get it to bite. Additionally, we know we own a tremendous amount of property over at fifty-nine hundred Reynolds Road. You see the, the section there, we still got some lighting. We eventually, I mean, I know we've had conversations, but again, this is things where if we're not paying attention to it, it gets kinda lost in the shuffle, you know. We, we gotta move the building forward, you know, it's deteriorating kinda as we speak. And that's enough to say, okay, we had some, some good plans and ideas, right? But that was just kind of an exterior courtyard visual, what we need to, to move that inside space as well, so it's not just the dark space. We gotta do rentals, we gotta look at the, the properties we already own there, the facilities we already own. Get them in a pipeline and as, as the opportunity arises, whether that's a, a grant like we've been dealing with recently, you gotta be ready. And if you find the right one, and we know that there's some federal money out there for some pretty cool stuff that's coming. And it's just a matter of, they're looking, you know, in the old days they call it shovel-ready project, right? I wanna put real money in the ground, I wanna put real people to work. And if you did your homework and we're ready, then I can capture some of it. And if we just say, well, we gotta study it and then, you know, we're gonna be on somebody's private property and we're gonna be here forever, by the time we get the design, that money's gonna went to somebody else. So, and then ultimately we know we've got good money for the trail system in terms of grants, real grants to be able to spend somebody else's money, state money, your tax money, however it comes out, to offset a bunch of that in some cases. So we don't, we don't have a next phase plan.
I mean, other than the connection under the power line.
Right, but that one's already bid out and it's coming in, right? So you're looking at it saying, let's say a grant showed up, they're not playing, I don't know where it's gonna go. And I'm sure silly, grab a piece of paper real quick and we can make some things happen, but, but why don't we?
Real quick?
You know, put it maybe where somebody wants it and, and make sure we do our homework on that.
He said, real quick, Sydney.
The path system, that was one of the other things for Lowe's, is to be able to go in there and say some maintenance and some cleanup. But literally right behind this should come in to some things that we talked about, we had a really pretty spring this year, right? We've got some very good cherries in the, in the park. These are the doggies and the traditional things that might not be nominated in Georgia, but it looked good, right? And we know when you get a little cull snap and all the, all the pears and trees fall off or whatever, but, you know, somewhere in there is, is kind of a landscaping idea. Not, not just maintain, but, you know, let's make it look sharp. Talked about it, but we don't have a plan to actually do it. And if we realize there's a plan and then there's information and implementation in phases, and again, you know, where is that? It's, it's, you know, I'm not looking at anybody in specific terms, I'm looking at cherries, she'll tell me it's your fault, John, you should have done it and you gotta get it. But anybody could have, somebody should have and nobody did. And we know we're talking about it, so we're doing our part, all right? So we gotta talk about it, we gotta fund it, we gotta be able to make sure that we point to some authority list and then still be able to take on, you know, economic development tasks and other opportunities that show up. That's your full meal deal, that's your plan, okay? And we're getting close to being able to have the full plan and being able to say, okay, we got it. We, we got some inexperience, we gotta learn some things, everybody gets that. But that's what is gonna, you know, give us the best opportunity to be as successful as we possibly can. And I've been to some of those meetings, I, I promise you, if you hadn't had a chance to sit in on a couple, it's, it's nice to, to, to be wanted. Outside of just, I paid for something for me and I'm not gonna give you the return. And that takes the, the whole group, everybody that's in the building. Did I miss something on a, on a second?
Okay. Comments for the Collins? Ms. Dean? Ms. Knight?
I'm good.
Ms. Tran?
I'm good.
Anybody else? Everybody good? We'll call it a night.